Okay, all right, so, all right. Bam bam. I'd like to call to order the special town council meeting for March 23rd, 2020. It is now 7:01. Wendy? Would you like to take the role, please?
Yes, I will. Councillor Gardner?
Present.
Councillor Kulturitis?
Present.
Councillor Schoen? Councillor Schoen?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Schoen, present. Councillor Tulowitzki?
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki, present. And President Mellon?
Present.
President Mellon, present. All five councillors are present this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask everyone to pause for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America. And to the Republican-
One nation-
-of God. Indemnity-
With liberty and justice-
For all.
Thank you. Um. Do you have one interruption? I hear a lot of feedback. I don't know if that's a, it almost sounds like a TV. I'm not sure. Hello, Mike?
Hello.
Dustin, perhaps you can mute everyone as the host?
I'm not hearing the feedback now.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. At this time, it brings us to the 45th Street construction update.
Okay, this is Lee Randall, DLZ. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, highly.
Hi. Okay, so update as far as East 45th Street goes. Obviously, storm sewer installation continues at the underpass and also to the west of the underpass towards Calumet Avenue. Once that is complete, which is expected to be complete this week, then Walsh is expected to continue excavation of the underpass itself. On West 45th at Calumet Avenue, the streetlights with NIPSCO and HAWK should be active currently. That would, should have been completed last week. I have not witnessed that to confirm. And also, beginning Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 25th, we are expected to begin our lane restrictions. They will do some milling at the southwest corner of 45th and Calumet, as well as install temporary wall and start installing a deep storm structure there. And that's expected to last a few weeks there as well.
Okay. Councillors, do, does anyone have a question for Mr. Randall?
Is Mr. Randall gonna stick around for the remainder part of the meeting so we can ask him a question or two regarding the acceleration agreement later on?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, Mr. Randall or Lee? Just curious if you can tell us so far what there has been, what has been the impact of any of the things going on with relation to coronavirus on the, on the work?
There has been no impacts to date. And currently in discussing with the contractor, there aren't any anticipated or known delays expected with fabrication, suppliers, things of that nature at this time.
Okay, thank you. That's good news.
Any other questions, councillors? Seeing none, okay, thank you, Lee. We may have some for you a little bit down in the agenda. Bear with me here just a minute. I can't see my entire, okay. So that brings us to the public comment section. And because of the unique nature of this meeting, the Town of Munster will only accept public comments submitted electronically. If you have a question or comment about an item on the agenda, please email that question or comment to muster.org. Mr. Anderson will ensure that all submissions are shared with the elected officials of the town. And this submission will also be entered into the public, into the meeting the minute. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy as always. Okay, at this time, um, I like to read a statement. Given the rapidly evolving health crisis and the directives from our state, we are meeting virtually to keep us, our families and our residents safe and healthy. I ask that everyone be patient and forgive any hiccups we might encounter as we conduct our essential business via this platform. I'm going to begin the meeting with a statement that reflects collaboration with my fellow councillors, clerk treasurer, town manager, police chief shekel and fire chief Pelk. First, we want to ensure you that our Munster employees and officials are dedicated to keeping our town safe and viable. We are continually monitoring the COVID-19 situation and taking steps to continue delivering high-quality services to our residents without disruption. We have been keenly aware of the health crisis and been preparing for the impact. As a governing body, we are balancing the need to be flexible with our policies and procedures while also remaining in compliance with the national and state directives. We will continue to be compliant while also finding new ways to rise to this evolving challenge. Today, Governor Holcomb issued a stay-at-home order for all non-essential business and travel. We advise all residents to abide by the CDC guideline of conducting only essential business. The experts believe that these measures are vital to slowing the spread of the virus. Munster has no known COVID-19 cases among our employees. We are taking precautions to ensure our staff remains healthy. For personal safety, we have closed access to all public buildings. We will be mandating one person, one vehicle in our operations departments. And town employees will be entering resident homes only in the case of an emergency. We appreciate the commitment of our employees. Not only have they risen to the challenge of adapting to new ways of conducting business-
Yes, indeed. Glad to talk to you.
They have shown the same creativity and resilience that we have seen through our entire community.
Oh my God.
Even with-
Okay, this is not an emergency, certainly.
Since these precautions, they continue to work for you. All public works, functions will continue. Utility services will continue for all Munster residents. Utility payments can be processed online. Used in the red drop box in the town hall parking lot. Building permits and contractor licenses are available online. And parks programs can also be registered for online or by telephone. All non-essential public meetings have been canceled until further notice. Essential public meetings, like this special town council meeting, will be held virtually so that you can attend from the safety of your home. And recordings will be made available on our website afterwards, technology permitting. Please refer often to the town's website and Facebook page for the latest and updates. Contact for all our departments can be found there, and we are happy to help you. We are in lockstep with our other governmental agencies and are following the chain of command to ensure a coordinated response. Munster has a long-established disaster plan that outlines our response to many scenarios that may threaten our community. One of those scenarios is a pandemic. The policy was recently reviewed and calibrated to specifically address the threat of COVID-19 by the Regional Emergency Management Agency, the school board and local hospitals. Police Chief Shekel is the commander of Northwest Indiana Information Sharing and Security Alliance, otherwise known as NISA. A statement from the chief can be found, will be found on our website shortly so that you can read more about NISA and what they're doing to prepare. And what their, what their, their role is in the community across, all across Lake County. Our fire chief Pelk is active in emergency management with Lake County and our Illinois border towns. Both chiefs have been providing regular updates to the town manager, clerk treasurer and department heads. The town manager has been updating the town council as well as the public. We are in daily contact with both community and Franciscan hospitals and stand ready to assist them in any way that we, that they may need. We are fortunate to live in a community known for its healthcare. We are thankful for our doctors, nurses and other healthcare workers who are working non-stop to tackle the crisis. Both hospitals issued statements along with links to their websites and other health websites that offer hotlines, incredible information and directions regarding COVID-19. We will post those to the town's website for easy centralized reference. Munster has a strong business community that has been very supportive of our, of our community. Now is our time to assist our restaurants and grocery stores. Most Munster restaurants are offering carryout options. And your support of them at this time makes a difference. To further support our businesses, we have suspended temporary sign restrictions which will allow them to quickly and easily communicate new business hours and offerings without costly advertising. We understand that this is a difficult time for everyone, but we are encouraged by the creativity and resilience we are seeing among our residents and across neighboring communities. From those who are looking out for each other by taking groceries to their elderly and high-risk neighbors, to the people who are sewing masks for the nursing homes, to the teachers and administrators who are working to educate our children while they are away from school, we appreciate your life-altering efforts. Although this will not end quickly, we all look forward to emerging from it as both a stronger organization and community. Thank you. And that will move us to the consent agenda.
I move that we waive the rules or that we accept consent agenda as presented?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Very good. I show that Councillor Gardner has made the motion and Councillor Tulowitzki has seconded the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Are you ready for a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner voted yes. Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis voted yes. Councillor Schoen? Councillor Schoen, is he muted?
He is not muted.
Councillor Schoen? Am I trying this up to technical difficulties on-
Looks like he can't hear us.
I can't see him, so I-
Okay. Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. The consent agenda has passed as read.
Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to, oops, my- My agenda is scrolling without my, let's see, oops. Apologize here. Um, one moment, please. If someone can help me, I've lost the agenda here.
The item there is the second reading of ordinance 1793, which is confirming the certified budget for 2020. This was introduced as an ordinance for transfers within certain appropriated funds for the year 2020. And ordinance 1793 confirms the 2020 budget as certified by the Department of Local Government Finance. Part of this process involves transferring budget money amounts among the major expenditure groups within each fund. Municipalities are allowed to transfer budget amounts from one major expenditure group to another within the same fund in order to avoid overspending the budgets. These transfers must be authorized by ordinance or resolution. And the amounts of each group are reviewed regularly. And it is anticipated that mid-year adjustments will be made. At this time, we are asking for a motion.
I would make a motion that we would adopt ordinance number 1793 on second reading as presented.
I second it.
Very good. I have Councillor- Tulowitzki accept ordinance 1793 on the second read and seconded by Councillor Kulturitis. Am I due to vote call vote? Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner votes yes. Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis votes yes. Councillor Schoen? Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
President Mellon?
Yes.
Very good. We have the motion presented passing four to zero.
Thank you. And that brings us then to new business, the Great Separation Project Acceleration.
Thank you. May I?
Yes, please.
So this is a proposed change order brought to us by INDOT and our construction engineer, DLZ. What this contemplates is the authorization to accelerate construction to- one moment, I am allowing a resident to enter the meeting. So you'll forgive me for doing a couple of things at once. The project acceleration would allow the contractor to work hours outside of the contract to accelerate those elements of the construction project that would bring us closer to completion. So you might look at this and say, well, there's $275,000. What does this actually get us right now? So the current situation as it stands, there are two outstanding, another person, two outstanding claims, change orders submitted by the contractor that would extend the length of the project into 2021. And the estimated cost of extending that construction into 2021 is up to $450,000. So that's on the one hand here. On the other hand, we have an opportunity to waive those change orders that the contractor has held. In exchange, we authorize that contractor to work 12-hour days, Saturdays, as they see fit, up to $275,000. So the work elements that would be authorized would only be those work elements that actually brought the construction project closer to final or substantial completion in 2020, which is what the contractor wants, what the town wants. And I believe it would be very much so what the residents want at a cost of up to $275,000. If that is not the case, if this is not authorized, then Walsh would, by right, an Indiana Department of Transportation process, submit those claims and go through a whole process, a quadge judicial process where INDOT may authorize more time and expenses greater than $275,000. I know there were some really good questions that came up throughout the intervening days between the last council meeting when it was supposed to happen. And today, we do have Lee Randall, our construction engineer, and Brad Daly as well to answer any fine-grained details about how we would manage the authorization of that additional work. So it's just not writing a free check for $275,000. But I feel like this is a really important item of business for the potential completion of this project this year. And I'm excited to bring it to you for your consideration. Is, are there any questions?
I would just make a comment, Dustin, that in case others aren't aware yet that what, when the governor issued his executive order today, it did exempt roadwork, construction, such as our project. So we do have an opportunity here to continue working at least now, for now. So I wanted to, if others weren't aware of that yet, I wanted to share that.
I think that's a really important distinction. We actually have the Lurford District of INDOT, the region that we operate under, that is on record saying that this project should go forward because it is indeed exempted. That's not our interpretation. That's INDOT's interpretation of the governor's order. So thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Madam Chairman?
Counsel.
I move we approve the change order number 005 and INDOT's contract B36229.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, this is Councillor Tulowitzki. So thank you for bringing this forward. I also want to make sure that I understand and everyone understands the acceleration money that we're putting forward is, and the letter, and maybe Lee, you can correct me if I'm not wrong. The letter says that as things stand today, if we approve this acceleration, the escalation that will be needed in next year's construction year will not be required. And if I understand correctly, there's a 49-day period due to set of delays that have already happened, no fault of the town or the, or any of the parties involved in construction. So it's really the 49 days that we're trying to manage. And if we do this acceleration, nothing else changes. Those 49 days, we can process this year and won't be on the hook for paying anything next year. And residents will have, you know, this, this underpass functional. So I guess what I would like to see, and I also understand from the letter, is that we'll be hearing sort of weekly updates on whether or not we're using acceleration and what the impact of that is. So going forward in our, in our regular town council meeting updates, I guess, Lee, I would like to see the, whether or not we've done the acceleration in the previous period and what the impact is on that number. I don't know if you're able to quantify it on that 49 days, but that's, that's something I would, that I think would make the status reporting more complete.
Yes, of course. Obviously, the cost itself will be easier to track because of the time worked, the hours worked by the contractor itself. With that, there's also a schedule that's been submitted by the contractor for the process of acceleration. So with obviously that work that is transpired in comparison with their schedule, we should be able to base that progress in comparison with that. And the intent, of course, is yes, to complete all of construction this year so that there is no additional base required for those two delays that you mentioned to be constructing the roadway next year.
President Mellon, I have a question. This is Chuck Gardner. Dustin, in your memo that's on this first page under methodology, you mentioned in the second line, November intermediate completion date. Can you explain, is, does that, is that just the terminology that we're using? Because I guess, is there, when I see the word intermediate, that means that there's still going to be construction afterwards. But is, what, what does that November intermediate completion date mean?
Fair question. So there are two schedules. There is the contract schedule that we have with the contractor vis a vis INDOT that says final completion will be in the spring of 2021, but substantial completion will be in the fall of 2020. Basically, meaning, you know, there'd be landscaping and the top coat, lane striping to be done in the following year. That's what the INDOT contract currently has. Walsh's internal construction contract schedule has this project being complete this year in total. They don't want to come back here anymore than we want to have them, quite frankly. And I appreciate their sense of urgency. So what we have is a situation where we, you can't make someone commit to being, to a timeline that goes beyond what their original scope was with the state, right? And then this is one of those scenarios where the contract with Walsh is, is a unique entity because it's, it's, you know, neither fish nor fowl. Are we, are we the client or is INDOT? The contract is run and administered by the town and INDOT. So the, when we say intermediate completion, that means that we will have at the base the ability to have substantial completion by the end of this year. The hope is, and Walsh's goal is, as you can see in their letter that's included in the agenda, their, their goal and our goal is to have this done by the end of this year.
So, so that intermediate completion date is really substantial completion where we have asphalt being completed and all that kind of stuff. But the, the minor things like a landscaping might get pushed into next year, but that's not going to accelerate or escalate the clause of the contract at all. Very good, thank you.
If I may interject real quick, this is Lee. The intermediate completion date in the contract, like Dustin mentioned, doesn't include HMA surface or pavement striping. So technically, with the contract itself as written, that could be done in 2021.
Okay.
As it's currently written and as it was adopted all the way back in February last year.
What, if I could just get a clarification, what does HMA stand for?
I'm sorry, hot mix asphalt.
Is that the top coat asphalt then? Is that-
All of them, but the surface, working from the top down is called surface, intermediate and base.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Okay, we have, anybody else? I don't know if we, can we hear Ken? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you first then, Ken, before we lose you? I show Councillor Andy Kulturitis made the motion to approve change order number 0005 for INDOT contract B36229. And I have it seconded by Councilman Gardner.
That's correct.
Very good. Roll call vote will be Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner votes yes. Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis votes yes. Councillor Schoen?
Abstain. I didn't hear enough of the discussion.
Very good, thank you. Councillor Schoen abstains. Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. We have four yeses, one abstention.
Thank you. Okay. That takes us to, let's see, that brings us to the next item of business. I can't see again.
Do you want me to go ahead, Leanne? This is mine. It's the Resolution 2067 for the Timely Deposit of Funds. What we've got is a proposed resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer of the Town of Munster to make deposits in accordance with the State Examiner Directive 2020-1. The state of Indiana, including the Town of Munster, is currently experiencing a public health emergency for the coronavirus disease 2019 as outlined in Executive Order 20-02. During this state of emergency, the town is having to conduct business in a different way. The State Examiner of the Indiana State Board of Accounts issued a directive and the town wants to comply. Indiana Code 5136-1 outlines the requirements for depositing public funds. Under this statute, deposits must be made the business day after receipt. Directive 2020-1 allows deposits to be made twice weekly on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Council must take action to authorize this change in procedure. The clerk treasurer's goal is to continue daily deposits for as long as possible. Twice weekly deposits will only be permitted during the public health emergency. And Resolution 2067 has been drafted for this purpose.
Thank you, Wendy.
President Mellon? I move that we, that we approve Resolution 2067 as presented.
Second.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. I believe that was Ken. Correct. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call the roll?
I will. I just want to clarify. Councillor Tulowitzki moved and a second was given by Councillor Schoen? Or by Councillor Kulturitis?
Mr. Schoen.
Very good. Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner votes yes. Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis votes yes. Councillor Schoen?
Yeah.
Councillor Schoen votes yes. Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item C, payment of claims.
All right, very good. This is mine as well. The state of Indiana is currently experiencing a public health emergency. as outlined in Executive Order 20-02. During this state of emergency, the town is having to conduct business in a different way. And the State Examiner of the Indiana State Board of Accounts has inter, issued an directive, and the town wants to comply. Indiana Code 51110 outlines the requirements for paying claims. Directive 2020-1 allows the council to designate one of its members to approve claims for payment in advance of full council approval. Any claims paid in this manner will be presented to the council at the first meeting after the public health emergency has ended. From a practical standpoint, the Office of the Clerk Treasurer will email the designee the standard voucher register report. The designated counselor will respond by email the approval or denial. Claims narrowly paid under Ordinance 1496, which is regarding demand payments, will continue to be paid in the manner we have always paid them. Those claims will be presented for confirmation at the first meeting after the public health emergency has ended.
Thank you, Wendy.
So we're looking for a motion and a roll call vote, and then we'd like to designate one council member to approve the payment of claims.
Prior to making the motion, can I suggest that we designate the president of the council as our designate, designatee, so then I can just make the motion and designate the one council member at the same time?
Thank you. That will work.
Then I would move that we would designate the president of the council, President Mellon, to approve the payment of claims in accordance to Indiana State Examiner Directive 2020-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is this, Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Will do. I show that Counselor Gardner moved, and Counselor Tulowitzki seconded the motion to designate President Mellon to approve the payment of claims. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Coulteritis?
Yes.
Counselor Coulteritis votes yes. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah.
Counselor Spoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. The, this passes five to zero.
Thank you, Wendy. That brings, that brings us to Item D, the Ordinance 1796, Third Amendment to the 2020 Salary Ordinance. I believe this is a combination of Dustin and Wendy.
Do you want me to go ahead, Wendy? I can just give a brief description of what this is because when we bring it back to you for second read, it will change because we have some, we will have some guidance from the Federal Department of Labor. As you may or may not know, the, the president signed an emergency bill that allowed for certain benefits to employees under certain categories. And the Department of Labor is yet to issue specific guidance for what this is. So this will change, but what we have before you to consider is, before that all happened, our best effort to look after our employees and make sure that those people that needed to take sick time and perhaps did not have enough accumulated sick time could either care for a person in their home who is symptomatic or believes they might be symptomatic, or care for themselves and self-quarantine if they believed themselves to be symptomatic. The, the gist of this is, if you were to believe that you were symptomatic, would be symptomatic, or someone in your household would be, and you did not have the appropriate amount of accumulated leave, you could take that time and go into deficit, basically, because your health is more important, the employee's health is more important than anything else because every person counts in a situation like this. We don't want that person feeling that they have to compel, be compelled to come into work if, if they, if there's even a shadow of a doubt that they may be symptomatic. So that's what you have before us. I, I would recommend passing this. It will be amended to reflect federal guidelines. We're going to work very closely together, the Clerk Treasurer, the comptroller, myself, and our attorney, Mr. Dave Westland, to make sure what you see before you at the next meeting is seamless with the federal guidance.
And that can be done by next week?
I believe the next council meeting is April 6th, so that would be two weeks from now, sir. So that, that's a, that's a segue into a legitimate question. Well, if it's, if it's in two weeks, why, why do it now? You would, we've implemented this now, and we would propose having this be effective retroactively because sometimes you need to act faster than even this technology would allow to protect the organization and the employees within it.
Dustin, oh, sorry.
I move we propose Ordinance 1796 on first reading and schedule it for our second reading at the next regular meeting.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Dustin, I was curious if you could outline what the federal guidance are, what will be the impact on employees from what's been, come down from the federal government?
We hope to get that on Wednesday, from, from on high, as it were.
And in principle, that would, I mean, so I, I really appreciate this, this ordinance. It allows people to stay home when they need to stay home.
That's the gist of it, yes, sir.
The time. And, and what's likely to come down from on high, as you put it, is some funding from the government so that potentially they don't need, oh, sorry, I'm seeing ahead now.
No funding, just a guideline on who is eligible and how much time is eligible.
And what we think we can take it out of, how are we gonna, we plan to pay the employee. How are we going to pay them? Out of what bucket does that money come from? And who's eligible? Are you sick? Is it a family member or someone else sick? There's, there's quite a lot of V to it.
Yeah, but there's, there's no expected enhanced sick leave or anything that we've heard of so far.
In, in essence, it is, one of the key elements of the, the bill that was signed last week is enhanced sick leave. So they say two weeks. Well, there's all kinds of fine-grained detail that go into that. We don't know the fine-grained detail.
Adam, President.
Yes.
So to try to, try to answer Mr. Tulowitzki's question, the statute has an effective date, the federal statute has an effective date of April 1st, which was two weeks after the president signed it. The statute itself also calls for the, the Secretary of the Department of Labor to write regulations, which is what Dustin was referring to, to kind of clean up some of the ambiguity in the, as Ms. Miss referred to, fairly meaty document. Right now, the, the federal statute requires a certain amount of paid time off in addition to what you would typically refer to as your sick time or vacation time if the employee meets certain circumstances as provided in the statute. That covers all employers that have less than 500 employees. However, how that meshes with current federal statute as well as current federal regulations is kind of what Dustin's referring to relative to kind of the granular details. And I think we're all kind of waiting to see what the Secretary of Labor comes up with between now and two days from now in terms of how that's all going to kind of fit together. So I agree with Mr. Anderson that you should pass this on first reading. It, it will be amended. There's about a 95% chance that you, the final version of this is going to have some amendment to it, but I, I think you need to, to kind of keep moving this forward. Like I said, the federal statute doesn't take effect until April 1st, so you're going to have a meeting, you know, six, five days later where you'll be able to pass this ordinance in compliance with that statute.
Okay, thank you. It was helpful.
Prior to accepting this, I would just like to thank the Town Manager's Office and the Clerk Treasurer's Office for quickly realizing that we needed to do something here and putting this document together. So I do appreciate both the Town Manager's Office and the Clerk Treasurer's Office for working diligently on this ordinance amendment.
Thank you. A real thank would be a motion and a second.
I have a motion and a second. I think we're.
Now we need a, yep, now we just need to move forward with the vote.
I was gonna say, I was sitting here pondering, did, did we, I think we already have a first and a second, so. Okay, thank you.
Coulteritis and Mr. Tulowitzki, Counselor Tulowitzki and Counselor Coulteritis were the second and first recently. So I'll restate that, that Counselor Coulteritis moved in a second by Counselor Tulowitzki to hear the proposed Ordinance 1796 on our first reading as presented, and we'll schedule a second reading for our next meeting, tentatively scheduled for April 6th. Are you ready for the roll call vote?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Coulteritis?
Yes.
Counselor Coulteritis votes yes. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah.
Counselor Spoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Our President Mellon votes yes. This motion passed five to nothing, five to zero, and we'll schedule a second reading.
Thank you. That takes us to our next item, E, Resolution 2068, Temporary Loans.
This is from the Clerk Treasurer's Office. Once again, this is in reaction to the COVID-19 and the health emergency we're currently experiencing. It is not unusual to do temporary loans at the end of the year. What we are asking from the town council is the flexibility to do that sooner. As we're looking at our, our current situation, we are fine, but we want to be flexible and be able to react to anything that changes quickly. So what we've got is the, the towns are allowed to make temporary loans from one fund to another to remedy any funds with insufficient cash. This is a common practice and one the town may need. To be clear, this is a loan between the various funds of the town, and it's not borrowing money from outside entities. We have two resolutions here that we're presenting to you. They work hand in hand. They involve insufficient cash in a fund, and Resolution 2068 provides the framework for making temporary loans. And then the second, well, we'll do one resolution at a time. So that's 2068.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2068 as presented, authorizing temporary loans in the amount to be determined.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. I have Counselor Gardner moved in a second by Counselor Tulowitzki, and the roll call vote will go Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Coulteritis?
Yes.
Counselor Coulteritis votes yes. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah.
Counselor Spoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Very good. This motion will pass five to zero. Thank you, this resolution. And then the part to that is Resolution 2069, and it extends the temporary loans. Typically, the temporary loans expire at the end of a calendar year. However, there is, Indiana Code 36184B allows for repayment of temporary loans to be extended to June 30 of the following year. This allows for additional time and tax draws. So we're, again, asking for the flexibility that gives the town the greatest amount of time to repay any loans between funds.
I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 2069, extending the temporary loan and transfers as authorized in Resolution Number 2068, dated March 23rd, 2020.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Oh, I guess just one question is, Clerk Treasurer, Ms., how, how are you going to be reporting out, or, or what are the plans for? We don't know what's going to be needed yet. I'm fully in favor of giving us the flexibility to do what we need to do, obviously, to keep running. I'm just curious how we're going to be monitoring the loans that we've made and, and sort of tracking that as we go along.
I believe Exhibit, there's a four, I don't have it, Exhibit A demonstrates how we keep track of that. It's a regular report that we provide to you, and it does go to councils, so you'll have an opportunity to review it.
Are there any other?
There we go.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, yeah, I guess my, my comment would be, as we start to get through this situation we're currently in, that we bring it back in, in the council at an appropriate time down the road, just to check in on how much we've, we've borrowed in.
We're required to report it to you, and we certainly will. We won't not let you know, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Coulteritis?
Yes.
Counselor Coulteritis votes yes. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah.
Counselor Spoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. The motion that was moved by Counselor Gardner with a second by Counselor Coulteritis to adopt 2069, Resolution 2069 passes five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, there are no reports. The announcements are that there, the next regular town council and redevelopment commission meeting will be held on April 6th. No meeting on April 13th, followed by April 20th, which is a regular town council and redevelopment commission meeting, and no meeting on April 27th. That brings us to adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a tie for second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. This was, I think this was successful, given our first attempt at this, for sure.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
All right. Stay safe.
You too.
Stay put for, is there redevelopment commission is next, correct?
Oh, yeah, come on.
Come on, Andy.
Andy. Okay, well, at this time, it is 7:50, and I will call to order the special redevelopment commission meeting for March 23rd, 2020. We, same for the public comments that we asked for you to please submit any public comments electronically, given the unique format that we're using tonight. Those questions will be forwarded to all counselors, and they will be recorded in the minutes. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to the policy issues as always. That brings us to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Can I just have clarification who seconded the motion?
I think it was Dr. Coulteritis, and, and, and I tried, let's, let's give it to him.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I show Commissioner Gardner presented the motion, and Commissioner Coulteritis seconded. Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner votes yes. Commissioner Coulteritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulteritis votes yes. Commissioner Spoon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Spoon votes yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki votes yes. And Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon votes yes. Consent agenda is approved five to zero.
Thank you. I am not seeing at this point, and not finding it on my phone either. If someone could please help me with the first item of business, I'd appreciate it.
There is.
Adjournment.
With there's not.
There's no old business, no news, no reports, no announcements, so that brings us to adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Kulturitis moved to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I heard Ken.
Second.
We need a virtual panel. Sounds like a mutiny.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor for adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Stay healthy, guys. Take care.
Take care. Good night. Wendy, good night. I need to ask Wendy about signing. I usually sign everything. This is just for me. I sign, have to sign as president.
I'll sign out. Thank you, everyone.